But he said they may be one of those expedited changes.
All right, welcome to our August 1st Board of Supervisors meeting. I will call this meeting to order and I'd like to ask Craig, would you say a prayer for us?
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for the day that you've given us today. The privilege that it is, Father, to come to serve our fellow man. For these men who have committed themselves, their time, who have sacrificed much more so that they can serve. I pray, Father, that you'll give them wisdom that they will understand the decisions that need to be made that are in the best interest of all citizens of our county. I thank for this place that we call home, the blessings that you have bestowed on us. We look around, Lord, and we see all the things that you've done for us. We know we don't deserve it. Father, we pause now to say thank you. Thank you for all you do for us, Lord. I pray for continued protection. In Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you. All right. And we have some people here that are...
We're into the planning commission for ourselves, Mr. President.
Well, I was gonna try to switch it if it's okay. But being we have folks sitting here that we could go ahead and handle that, their business, if that'd be all with the order. Is that all right?
Mr. President, we can do whatever you want.
That's all right, your charge.
Okay. All right. Well, we called it to order. We have the consideration approval of our June 27 minutes to have a motion. All right, we got a motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jay, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes. What about our old business? Have any comments here?
Most approved.
We don't, we don't have any old business.
He's wearing gear.
Yeah, that's, I'm just saying. Anything else there? All right, let's move on.
Rock and roll.
I hit the ground running, keep moving. Man, I've been out working this morning already. Y'all should have pulled up here, yeah? All right, new considerations.
All right, the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Shane D. Roberts at 328 Fannin Landing Circle. This property is located on the north side of Fannin Landing Circle. Mr. Roberts is seeking the conditional use permit to operate an equipment rental and sales business on this property. It's a 20-acre parcel, zoned RE1. That's an aerial view. There's an existing building on the property that was, it's been commercial, used as commercial for over 20 years. This is their survey. The building sits here. That's a view of that building. It was previously occupied by Site One Landscape Supply. The proposed business will have lawn and garden equipment, small excavators, tractors, trailers, and multiple hand tools. Mr. Roberts said all of the equipment will be stored on the inside of the building. There won't be any outside storage, and there can't be any outside displays either. He's proposing hours of operation as Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 7:30 to 1:00 p.m. He's here today if you have any questions for him. These are views of that property.
I don't think I have to comment, Ed. When are we gonna shut down that commercial use? I mean, I said to shut it down. Residential keeps going out there. It keeps pushing. I mean, you got Kelly putting a big subdivision out there too, right down the road on the south side. I mean, it, at some point, I don't know, I mean, it's, it keeps going high end, not high end, but, you know, high end. I mean, and I don't know how probably what he wants to do. It sounds reasonable and conservative, which is keep everything indoors. But at some point, it's still residential. You either find anything you made that needs to go commercial or it just needs to be shut down. I mean, for the...
I was feeling the same way, you tried to saw that building already there.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's just, you know...
It is what it is.
Yeah, that's, I mean, maybe whoever the owners are, whatever, they need a heads up that somewhere down the road may not continue on as a commercial use because you keep getting nice homes out there. You know, I don't care what kind of commercial, how you handle it. They're gonna say, mm-mm, we're getting tired of seeing the commercial aspect.
This is not a rezoning request, this is a conditional use. And that conditional use will be usurped at the point in time that this board, whenever that may be, decides to rezone that piece of property, probably in conjunction with others, taking it to a residential context.
It is some residential. It is residential.
It's already residential.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's...
So they're having to ask for the conditional use, you know? Which is looked at on a case-by-case or site-by-site basis. So, you know, if you don't want to save it there...
Yeah, right down the road is Kelly's putting that one in. And that area up there is just getting more and more residential. And I get it, but it, it's, something's got to go one way or the other, residential or commercial.
The applicant needs to understand that, you know, we're not gonna allow any expansion, more than likely. I don't think the board's position would be we would allow any expansion of it. That it, that it would be what it is and that it would be subject to being, you know, subject to a cease and desist at some point.
This is Daniel's district. He's not here.
Let's just set the public hearing.
Right.
I'm gonna make the motion to set it.
He, he's not here and he talked to me about it. I've looked at it, I'm familiar with that. There's a lot of farmland out there and it is developing in large lot residential for the most part. As long as I've been out there, there's been some type of equipment or tractor or whatever business in there. And I, I think it's almost part of the fabric as much as these new subdivisions.
All right, you got a, you got a real crop right here in half of the road.
Then it needs to be rezoned. I mean, it just, you know, keep on, one way or the other.
Daniel, he's, you made the motion to set it, I second it. All in favor? All right, let's move on. Passed.
The next item is a conditional use permit for Anthony Jones on Greenfield Circle. This property is located on the north side of Greenfield Circle. Mr. Jones is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2019 16 by 80 manufactured home on this property. It's a 1.40 acre parcel, it's zoned RE1A. That's an aerial view of the property. This is his site plan. The home will be placed here in this area. This property is adjacent to his father's property. This is a view of that lot where the mobile home will be going. This is his father's home. And then these are just surrounding properties.
Make a motion to set the hearing.
Second.
I think we have a motion by Bob to set it, second by Jared, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion pass.
All right, next is a rezoning request by J.T. Crownover and Robert Covington on Highway 469 North. These parcels are located on the west side of Highway 469. They're seeking to rezone two adjoining, two adjoining parcels. Mr. Crownover owns a 1.49 acre parcel. It's currently zoned A1. There's an existing mini storage facility on that property. And then Mr. Covington owns .79 acres. It's currently zoned R1B. A firework, a seasonal fireworks stand operates on this property. They're both seeking a change to C2. Their C2 zoning to the north, right here. Both these parcels are joint, are zoned C2. And this is an aerial view. You can see the existing storage facilities. If the change to C2 is approved, Mr. Crownover will seek a conditional use permit for expansion of the mini storage facility and to add some outside storage of recreational vehicles and boats.
Make a motion to set the hearing.
We have a second.
Second.
Bob makes a motion to set it, Jared seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass, set.
All right, so this is the conditional use permit for J.T. Crownover at 1633 Highway 469 North. This is the property I was just talking about, 1.49 acre parcel. This is the plat, the survey plat that shows what it looks like today with the two existing mini storage facilities. And this would be the future expansion. You can see where the two new buildings will go. There's an existing pad, dirt pad here that he wants to add gravel to for some uncovered parking for recreational vehicles, boats. He said it would contain approximately 12 spaces. And I think in the interim, before he gets ready to build the two new buildings, he wants to have that area for some temporary parking of vehicles as well.
Make a motion to set the hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Three, one, motion passed to set it.
Next.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Jackie Jones at 1286 Highway 471. This property is located on the east side of Highway 471. Mr. Jones is seeking the conditional use permit to replace an old manufactured home on this property with a brand-new 32 by 80 manufactured home. It's a .64 acre parcel, it's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view. This is his site plan showing the location of where the trailer will be placed on the property. He does plan to install some brick skirting around the bottom of the home. These are views of that property and the existing home. The new home's gonna go in the exact same spot. And he does have a recommendation for the sewer system from the Health Department. These are surrounding properties.
I'm sorry, is this me?
No.
Oh, you mean you said, make a motion to set it?
I, yeah, that's, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, go ahead and set the public hearing.
Yeah, listen.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Bob to set it, second by Jared. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed to set it.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for M&amp;F Construction LLC on Highway 471. This property is located on the west side of Highway 471.
Give me a second, Renee, is that seven properties?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't change. Well, seven properties actually owns the property. M&amp;F is the applicant. I forgot to change that, I'm sorry. All right, so the property's located on the west side of 471. They're seeking the conditional use permit to continue mining operations on this property. They were previously approved to mine four acres of this 62-acre parcel on May 15, 2019. That property's zoned RE1. That conditional use permit will expire when the MDOT Highway 43 project is completed and it's scheduled to be open to the public on August the 9th. So this is their site plan, if you will, showing the property. They, the access is shown here before they were coming in here and they're gonna move the access point down to where they had originally shown it to come in here. It's further to the north. This shows the area to be mined. And this is just the entrance that they have been using. It will be moved, relocated. That's the area, the hill there that they're cutting down. They'd like to continue to mine the property and sell fill material for house pads and other construction projects in the area. Their proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They do have their certificate of permit coverage from MDOT. It shows an expiration date of March 31, 2023. And they're here today if you have any questions. These are surrounding properties.
I'll set, make a motion to set the hearing.
Second.
We got a motion by Bob to set the hearing, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass.
All right, the last item is a conditional use permit for Lori Miller at 121 Cheryl's Lane. This property is located on the west side of Cheryl's Lane. Ms. Miller is seeking the conditional use permit to replace her existing home, which is a manufactured home, with a newer model manufactured home. This is a 1.90 acre parcel that's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view. And then this is her home. And then these are just surrounding properties.
Make a motion to set the hearing.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, this will be the first thing, the first item under the nuisance property hearings. Item A is the continuation of the James Lee Norwood Jr. nuisance property at 5995 Grants Ferry Road. It's a District 2 property. We had that hearing opened at one point, so this is a continuation of that. We'll reopen that hearing and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. Anyone here on behalf of James Lee Norwood Jr., please prepare to come forward.
Okay, so these pictures were the beginning pictures that were taken April 24. That hearing that it was continued from was on May 30 and at that time, Shornita Shavers was here. And these are the new pictures. There's, there hasn't been any change.
Is there anyone here on behalf of James Lee Norwood Jr.? Mr. President, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action on this matter.
Make a motion to declare a nuisance.
Jay makes a motion to declare it as a nuisance and then everybody else jumped in at second. We'll give it to Jared. Jared seconds it, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B is a continuation of the Rochay Janice Collier nuisance property, 130 Pennock Lane. This is a District 4 property. Again, this is a continuation of a prior hearing matter. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate that hearing is reopened. I will ask anyone here on behalf of Rochay Janice Collier to please prepare to come forward.
All right, so these were the pictures that were taken in January of this year, showing the condition of the property. These are the new pictures. There's not been any change.
My recollection is that this was a deal where I think Ms. Collier may have purchased the property. She had some help from her brother, if I recall, suggesting that this was a great buy. And it turns out that it might not have been such a great buy. I believe the board gave Ms. Collier some time to try to get, try to get attention to the situation. So that's where we are today.
Absolutely. Definitely has been a change. I don't, do you know when they came out and took the pictures? Because originally the grass was this high. I actually sent an individual out to cut the grass. They did, but I was unaware because the grass was so high that there were items in the way that they couldn't just mow, they had to mow around it. So I did send someone out there. It hasn't been forgotten. I'm doing it myself. I just started back working, so I still want the property. It's gonna take me some time, but definitely I have sent someone out there and they were able to actually mow the grass. And I know that's not a lot, but that's all that I could do, you know, even afford to do.
Renee?
Yes, sir.
I saw the street. Can you give me a view where and surrounding?
Sorry, gotta get back.
Where does Pennock run off of? What road?
Are you, are you, you're not planning on keeping it, Fred, are you?
Um, not at this point, not with the condition that it's in.
Right, so it's gotta go too.
It's gotta go. And like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm not married, I'm doing everything myself. So financially, I'll be paying for everything, the court.
Where is it?
Barker Road.
Leesburg area, whatever.
It's toward, in Pele Hachi.
Toward Pele Hachi?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we, we got complaint or we wouldn't have started working.
Right.
We only work complaints.
Yeah, I understand.
It's gonna, we're fixing to get back into another season, the fall and winter, and be wet and... If the board allows me, I would go another 60 days. But you gotta know, 60 days, because then you're gonna be going into the fall when it's gonna get wet and you're gonna be telling me, I can't do it, it's too wet. 60 days, it either be cleaned up or we're gonna set it to go to court.
Okay.
Somebody, uh...
That's my motion.
Have you contacted anybody on maybe tearing it down or? You can't haul it off and reuse it.
Right, to be honest, I'm learning. I don't even know where to start, if I'm honest with you. Like I said, this is the first property that I've ever purchased. You know, so I don't even know where to start.
I can tell you, if you clean that up...
Truck, a dump truck would get it.
I'm sorry?
Truck, a dump truck would take care of it.
Well, well, I, I mean, I know some people that take it down, but they're gonna charge you.
Absolutely, you know, I understand that.
That's the thing, you're gonna have to, you're not gonna be able physically take it down yourself.
I understand.
I don't know what to tell you.
That property out there is becoming more valuable.
It is.
So I would try to keep it. I would get it cleaned up.
Absolutely, and if I can get it cleaned up nine times out of 10, I just, you know, sell it, most likely.
Well, you can get it cleaned up like they're talking about. Somebody with a truck and a dump truck and it, you know, and it probably will cost some money, but not nearly what that property's worth. Would you, uh, stay in touch with Renee? And Renee might, in 60 days, will set it for the next meeting and there are no excuses.
Second. Okay.
I just wondered if they wanted to declare it a nuisance, that way we wouldn't have to come back if we don't see any progress.
And then hold on to it?
Well, I mean, we can wait the 60 days, right? And then...
That's the same thing, it's just that if you just throw your hands up and call her and said, I ain't doing nothing, you wouldn't even have to come back. Not here, you wouldn't, you'd have to come to justice court later, but let's set it and she'll track it for 60 days.
Okay.
If there's not real, real progress, then it's going up the hill.
Okay.
How many acres is it?
It's a little over two, a little over two acres.
Make a motion to set it to permit, call the public, please. Subject for review.
Bob made the motion. Jay second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, stay in touch with her.
Okay, so do I need to get any more information?
Give her a number and let her know what, what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, that hearing is, is closed. The next item, item C, is Alicia Makiba and Shavar Beverly nuisance property at 196 McCullough McLenn Road. This is District 3 property. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask anyone here on behalf of the Beverly folks to be prepared to come forward.
All right, so we've gotten complaints on this property, multiple complaints, started in October of 2018 just in regard to rubbish and debris, grass and weeds. These pictures were taken in June, June 10. And then these are the new pictures. I believe probably the grass was cut, but it's getting back to where it needs to be, probably cut again.
What part of McCullough McLenn is that on? Way on the east end?
She said close to Williams Road.
Williams?
Still east. Still, but I got all McCullough, it hits Williams.
I'm not very aware on which end of McCullough. It's on Williams end.
I, you know, it's, it's progressed along. Is it, is it in your opinion, Mr. Jones, that it's progressed enough? Or you wanna be, go ahead and declare it a public nuisance, so you'll keep monitoring it until it finally gets you...
I would do that.
Sir?
I would do that, go ahead and declare it.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to declare a public nuisance, send it to the Department of Review.
All right, we got a motion by Bob to declare it a nuisance, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The hearing for item C is closed. Item D is the William and Heather Sales nuisance property at 234 Cherry Bark Road, District 4. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with the photos. Anyone here on behalf of the Sales should plan to come forward.
All right, so we've received complaints on this property starting, it looks like in May of 2019 in regard to this inoperable vehicle. Tag shows it's 2011 and just rubbish and debris. And this property is located at Reservoir East. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Looks like they pulled something out of the other driveway. I like that mailbox shelter.
You got any of the, of the carport now?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought there was some showing that stuff still up against the garage, but maybe not.
I'm making a motion to set it. Or declare it a nuisance.
What's that, seven tailgate, the truck?
That was one of my signs.
You lost that one, huh?
No, it's a joke. All right, I've made the motion. Bob second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Public hearing for item D is closed. Item E is the Kenneth Wells nuisance property review. This is 2418 South Pearson, this is District 1. We'll open that public hearing.
Why are we even have to vote on this?
Sir?
Well, because we just, he, he's gotten the house down now. It needs to be cleaned up, there's no...
That's not really anything to talk about.
And, and we, you know? Can't find Kenneth, actually.
He did a good job getting it down, that's why we left it. I mean, that, that's all he lacks and he won't get that up.
So I guess the question is, would y'all wanna clean it up?
I thought we'd declared this a nuisance so many times.
Oh, we have, Jay.
We shouldn't have to do it.
That's right.
We have.
We have.
What do we, what do we do?
At this point, given the state, I, I think you're, really the only viable option that you've got at this point is to declare the nuisance and instruct Renee's office to take bids on cleaning it up.
Because it ain't nothing but a front and loader and a dump truck's all it take.
I don't wanna do that because then nobody gonna buy the property.
But you can't leave it like that.
Well, I would let the owner go back to court.
Well, I mean, that's fine, I'm gonna do that.
I do.
Let's do it that way.
I'm not sure, is there a problem where, didn't I hear he, where is he?
He's homeless, I don't know that we can find him. I mean, last I heard, he was living in the bus station in Jackson.
Who's paying the taxes on the place?
I don't know that, Steve.
It's exempt, he's disabled.
It's not exempt anymore.
It's not. It ain't exempt.
It's not?
I mean, he may have, up to the house was torn down, but it won't be exempt now.
Okay.
It's hard to be a homestead in that condition.
Somebody, somebody...
He can live there if he can live in a bus station, but I mean, it's not the most, you know...
So once it's on the tax roll, somebody will buy it then?
It'll sell for taxes, something a third of...
But I mean, it's gonna sit like that for...
Well, it's been like that for 15 years, though. I mean, it ain't like...
Even though the house is, and the garbage in front of it got cleaned up, now the house is...
Ryan, can you see that from the road?
I think we got a path there, folks.
You see a good part of the road.
Sounds like that, that the option of cleaning it up probably is, at this point, is not viable. So I would just say, let's, let's declare it a nuisance and ask Renee to take it up to justice and go from there.
This was just a review.
I mean, how many acres? How much land is it?
Okay, all right.
Half acre?
It says it's .499 from the GIS map.
Not viable.
Not viable.
This is the property that joined, plays well, property, I think it's two and a half, maybe?
Well, let me, would it be part of it? Or separated?
Separated.
How about this, let's just get through this year's tax sale.
See who...
See who buys it.
See who wants it.
What about, what about the other house?
It'll be three years, it's gotta go?
Well, the redemption period, that's right.
Somebody's gonna buy it in the tax sale. I mean, if you, if you put the assessment on it, somebody's gonna come in and pay it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Because these out-of-state owners don't have a clue.
Yeah.
So...
You say and clean it up and they put the assessment on it, they'll buy it.
Oh, yeah, you'll get your tax money.
I mean, hopefully you can take $1,500 to clean that up, $2,000. There's a half acre lot too.
I mean, you just cleaning that junk up right there?
There's an old vehicle on there somewhere too, in the doorway.
There's vehicles, tires, it's...
There's a vehicle back in bushes.
Yeah, I see the car now. It was hid from the, hid by the house.
It's a half acre solid.
Well, there's two of them, there's two of them, there's one right there.
We're already doing pretty well here, but we need to, we're digressing. Let's, let's set it.
Renee reminded me that this is a review matter. Renee reminded me, this is actually a review. This is not a matter that you are authorized to take action on at this point.
Set it?
This was, we need to, we need to go through the process of setting it. So you'll, you'll get another opportunity to look at this...
I'll set it.
Next time.
Jared makes a motion to set it. Jared makes a motion to set it. Second by myself. I think Renee's over there second here. We don't even need to do that.
We'll just have to start the process.
We're starting a process.
Well, what are we doing then?
Well, we'll do it for the next cycle, if that's what you want. If you want it to be done.
I mean, I don't know what to, I want it cleaned up, but if we, we, feasible to clean up, I don't know what to do.
If it's worth somebody trying to get them two cars cleaning up.
Mr. President, I make a motion recessed August 29th.
I got a suggestion, I got a suggestion on that. When they look at that, that one right on the hill, the other one right next door, just let them look at that one, see if they, see if they think it's clear too.
Still tied up in the estate, and we don't know the status.
There's the state open in Heinz County, and as a part of that estate matter, somebody will end up owning the property, and then we will actually have a live body to deal with on the condition. That's in a process. It's gonna take some time.
But if you go ahead, but if you go ahead and clean it and assess it, and that person who's gonna get it, will pay it then anyway.
You could do it that way, and it would be an assessment from the taxes, but you guys have to be talking about the cost.
All right, whatever y'all do.
Recess.
If you can recoup that way, I'm fine with it.
Our next meeting will be held on Thursday, August 29th, 2019, 9:00 AM. Let's recess.
So what we're gonna do, just leave it like it is?
Well, she said that it's gonna, we'll start.
Start it over.
Okay. Okay, all right, okay. Okay.
All right. Bob made the motion. I'll second it. Now, I guess we should vote on it. All in favor? All right, motion passes. All right, now then, let's go back and call this board supervisor's meeting back to order, and Craig, Slay, Board Attorney, discussion of a new courthouse artwork.
Yes, sir. We...
Are not.
Yeah, exactly. You do have options. So I wanted to give you some follow up. We sent out the renderings from the vendor that is providing the artwork that was planned for as a part of the new courthouse, construction of the new courthouse, obviously, Chancery Court, Justice Court building, that we're talking about. There's a, there is an entry wall that is floor to ceiling, some 25 feet tall, I believe it is, and it's a, it's a fairly prominent feature in the courthouse. And so artwork was planned for that feature wall as part of the courthouse project. Some $30,000 was actually set apart or dedicated to that, that piece of artwork. The renderings reflect the thought process of the artist. It's a, it's a stained glass type of art structure that is, actually stands off from the wall. It's a metal grid to which this stained glass artwork is affixed, and so it's a bit involved and, and significant. And so we sent the renderings out to you guys. Your staff had some ideas or some thoughts after, you know, the first opinion of it, and we gave our opinion to you guys as well. We asked for a secondary selection and sent that out at the same time, so y'all could sort of look through it and get a feel for what, what you're looking at here. The artist came back and told us that some of the, the written inscription that would be with the artwork would jack the cost up. It has something to do with the manufacturing process as it relates to, to inscriptions, to words. I don't fully understand it. Carl tried to explain it to me. I didn't get it, but, but I did understand when he said it would cost more, and so we told y'all about that.
Stop you right there, and let's just make the motion to table this to Monday, because our Carl's coming Monday to give us an update on that.
Is that gonna sway you one way or another?
Yeah.
Okay.
If y'all gonna, let me say this thing. If we're gonna cut our nose off to spite our face, let's just go ahead and do it now. I mean, you know, and if y'all gonna make it look like a big blank wall when you walk into it, and I haven't seen it, don't know it, you know, but, you know, here's a knee jerk reaction, and I just saying, let's wait till Carl gets here on Monday, since he's gotta come anyway to discuss it.
Why don't we just wait and see how much this bill is gonna end up costing us?
And I think, I think he's gonna tell you. You can wait.
Donations. People can bring something their child drew.
The whole purpose from I being up here is to give you guys some feedback that I asked Carl for on what are our options? Can we wait? Are we in trouble if we don't go ahead and make a decision now? The response back from Carl is, you'll be just fine to wait. This is not something to be terribly involved. We're talking about two or three days. They can do it at night. The cost is gonna be dependent upon what your ultimate selection is. If you guys say, "Forget the stained glass business. Just get somebody come in here and paint it."
What would happen if somebody was really heart giving and said, "I wanna donate this. It's been in my family." Maybe somebody took a real beautiful picture of a nice Palomina horse or something. I've seen that around town, you know, but anyhow.
Why don't you get a big steer done, and you make it, and you do it, and put it up there. We'll put it up there.
Him riding it?
Yeah, there you go.
Now, now, you can have one on top of me when I broke my neck, you know. No, I'm playing. I'm playing.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let y'all get that basic information. We don't have to go below than any further. That's okay. You wanna just say, we'll, we'll make a final decision when Carl gets here Monday?
Yeah, I would like to give Carl a hard time for him. Sell us $30,000 for our...
And I guarantee you, we won't be able to look at it and tell what it is.
All right, the next...
Make a motion. We set the public hearing for August 5th on B.
Yep, that's item B.
How about a second, somebody?
I'll second, but I, I, why don't you have them put all that stuff in the back, rather than make it available for 469? This is the one that y'all just approved in the...
We just set a hearing, we just set a hearing in the...
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's the one where they wanna do the outside storage?
Yeah. That's in Daniels area. Oh, you're talking about mini storage?
Yeah.
That's, that's the 15. This is just a trailer. This is a mobile home.
Oh, okay. All right, nevermind.
Hey, what?
I made the motion.
I say.
All right. Bob's made the motion. Jared second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
We have, we have visitors with us. This will be a part of an executive session. Just wanted to remind you guys.
I make a motion, I made a prayer.
Second.
I have a motion by Bob, second, by Jared, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, authority to refund Chancery Court's office for erroneous deposit in the amount of $5,734.76.
And if we choose not to do it, what happens?
We're out of balance.
Your auditors might not like it.
Well, I think Jessica's down there saying, "Yes, you do," but I'm going, "No, not really."
They do wanna see where you deposited.
How long are they planning on staying?
They like it. I don't know.
We're hoping. They're about to wrap up very soon.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been six months, eh?
We have a motion by Bob to approve, to have a second. All right, Jay second, assist. B, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. C.
In addition to B, I have one item to add. It's kind of similar to that one. It's also adding a refund to the Sheriff's Department in the amount of $261.31 for fiscal year 2019 tax forfeited land fees. We just need to add that to the agenda.
Motion to add it to the agenda?
Got a motion by Bob to add, second, but Jay to add it to the agenda. All in favor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That addition has been approved.
Thank you.
All right.
Item C, approval to adopt the policy regarding government wide and fund financial statement balances in accordance with the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement 54, and authority for the Board President to sign.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Bob makes a motion. Jared second. Any other discussion?
What is this?
Explain it, Craig, or whoever.
Formality kind of regarding our audit and the financial statement preparation for that.
All right. We have had a motion by Bob, second, by Jared, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Review of agendas for August 5th. Additional, have anything else that we need to put under additional business?
Yes, yes, I have one item. I need that item to, in Oak Grove, a few months ago, Mike repaired a culvert, or it's really like a bridge, and the head walls need to be poured, and they're more than $50,000.
More than $50,000?
Yeah. But since we have a project ongoing in Oak Grove, we can do a change order and let them go ahead and do it, and we won't have to bid it out.
This is a, this, this is a stormwater infrastructure that is directly connected to and related to the existing project. You guys recall that Chestnut was included in the original plans of this project. At the point in time that we had some issues with our prior contractor, the decision was made that the Chestnut piece of that would have to come at a later date, and so the decision was made to knock that off of, of the, of the project going forward. This is a piece that is directly connected to the remaining part of the project on the Oak Grove, what is that street?
Chestnut.
Uh, no, the, Acorn. It's directly connected to the infrastructure on Acorn, and so it's a part of the project that's going to affect Acorn. It needs to be dealt with. You've got a contractor in place that can do the work. They're already staged. They're already there, and so this is, what we wanted to make it clear is that this is not something that is related to JWB. This is not something that's related to the original contractor. This is separate from that, and so it needed to be clearly explained. I, I didn't want Jay getting hammered, quite honestly, with another bad aspect of that particular project. These things don't go together. We just have the ability to go ahead and take care of it with the current contractor. And so that's the request that's being made. Allow for this change order and approve the change order.
Is there anything good about this project?
Uh, it, yes, sir.
Nope. Not a thing.
You made the comment about bad. I've yet, I mean, poor Jay gets beat up, but Jay asked for it, so there's any good out of this project?
I think you've been getting a lot of enjoyment out of it.
Usually...
You wanna get a little closer to it?
I do have that sadistic side of me.
Usually, I have an answer for everything, whether I have an answer or not, but in this case, I really can't think of anything.
Even with this not being associated with the first contract, or the lead, or even the exiting of that, our, our specialist tells us we don't have to do any contract or bidding, or we just do a change order.
Yes, this, this is a change order of the project. One way or the other, this would have been tended to.
Yeah.
One way or the other, it would have been discovered.
Just as long as y'all are happy, are satisfied that we are papered up.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion, I add a second.
Second.
All right, Jay's made a motion to add. Bob seconds. All in favor? Motion passes. All right, now then, Jay makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Bob seconds. All in favor? Motion passes. All right, is there any?
So get them out there and get it fixed. They've been one lane for like two months now.
Poor Jay.
Any additional business, Mr. President?
That's what I was waiting. Anything else? All right, we have a reason for executive session.
Make a motion to discuss the need.
Got a motion by Bob to discuss the need, second by Jay. All in favor? Motion passes. Now, do we have a motion?
We have two bases under Section 25417, subsection 4B, subsection 4J. Those are your two bases for the executive session.
I make a motion to go into the executive session, because there's two four mission reasons.
Those are.
I have a motion by Bob, second, by Jared, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. End of the session.